Does anybody have anything like that to the agenda? No, the motion is approved. No. Motion, uh, excuse me. I'm Mr. Edwards, the second commissioner, may I have a favor?
Aye.
Aye. The vote, motion carried. And next one is the approval of the minute, July ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting. I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Motion for Mr. House, right, second commissioner Edwards, not in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The vote, motion carried. Okay, good approval of the claim, the next item on the agenda, any questions? I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
The motion for me, the second commissioner House, right, all in favor? Aye. The vote, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is vote, comment, if anybody wish to turn to board now.
Yes, sir.
My friend Lee.
Hello. My name is Christine Blessing, I'm here tonight to serve as liaison between players, parents, and board members. I've been asked to read some anonymous letters given to the administration of Gate City High School regarding behavior of volleyball coaches. Before I begin, I want to apologize to the tennis team and all the county schools that are here tonight to sit through this discouraging topic while they're here to receive such an accomplishment and celebrate the sport and the things that they have done to, during their successful season, and I congratulate them. I have several letters, anonymous letters, and things that I would like to read. These are not letters that I know who has written these, these were given to me by an individual I know not who wrote those. I'll start out with saying that this one is from a volleyball player. This is a varsity volleyball player. Hello, I'm a current Gate City High School varsity volleyball player, I would like to make the way we are being treated known. I feel as if not only me, but the whole team is miserable with the coaches. We constantly get told we aren't good enough, we never are told we're good enough, we do not deserve to be there, they make us feel like crap twenty-four seven, and at this point, it is not even coaching. They have used derogatory terms to describe us and how we play. They have made many comments about our weight and our build. In my opinion, no coach or adult should ever talk to people the way that they have talked to us. I know many of us have had enough and we want to change so bad because it has gotten so out of hand. It's amped up a lot this summer, it's the worst I've ever heard or seen. Many parents are also concerned and angry about how these adults are treating their children. This is also from another player, and this, um, this letter also contains some profanity, which I will quote verbatim. I've been playing volleyball for Amy Reed for what feels like forever. I love the sport of volleyball with everything in me. Since I was in fourth grade, I couldn't wait to put on a Gate City jersey and represent my school playing the sport that I love with my best friends. Within two weeks, we had had four people quit, one because Amy told her that she should be embarrassed of her body, and three because of mental health issues which were caused by the Reeds. I just want you to know that my team and I understand tough love and tough coaching, but this is beyond that. Before I decided to write this note, I talked with past volleyball players from state championship teams and teams that did not go as far as they hoped, and asked them about their experience. Many told me that they had to go through exactly what I explained, and their children will not be playing volleyball if the Reeds are still coaching. With what I'm about to tell you, I'm not looking for pity in any way, and that's exactly why I am saying, not saying my name in this note. I hope that while you read what I am about to tell you and think of every girl that has played before me that has had to go through what we have had to go through, and especially the ones that are going to come after. The ones who are still in love with the game, the ones that can't wait to put the jersey on and not knowing the way they will have to feel in order to wear it. There was a time in my life when the doctors told me I could have a brain tumor. The first thing that crossed my mind had nothing to do with what they just told me. My first thought was that if I have a brain tumor, I didn't have to play for Amy and Darren. I didn't have to be in practice at five AM every morning just for them to tell me that I'm not good enough to play on the same court as Michaela Baze. If I have a brain tumor, I did not have to listen to them tell me that I'm not worthy enough to get out of bed in the morning. When I found out that I did not have a brain tumor, I tried to break my own arm. Looking back at it now, I know that I shouldn't have let her make me feel the way she did, and I should have walked out a long time ago. But that shows you how much love I, along with my team, have for the sport. I placed my wrist on the concrete floor and I dropped a twenty-five pound weight on my wrist, six times, all at different angles. When I felt that I had broken it, I told my mom that I tripped and fell and that I needed to get it checked. She took me to the doctor just to find out that it wasn't even cracked. That night, I cried myself to sleep, wondering why I wasn't good enough and why I could not have just had a brain tumor so I could stop playing for them and not be labeled as a quitter. The next morning, I woke up with an extremely bruised wrist, and I knew that the only thing I could do was turn to God. The past few years, I have prayed that God would get mad, will get me and my teammates out of the situation that we are in, but at the same time, still allow us to play volleyball. This past week at FCA camp, as they cussed us out for not winning, I had coaches and players of our opponents apologizing to me and my team for the way we are treated. People that only knew from the outside looking in. I knew something had to be done when my team looked at me and said that they felt, quote, worthless, the exact same way I felt when I was at the lowest point in my life, and I would never wish that on my worst enemy. The worst part for me is sitting on the side, listening to my coaches degrade my teammates behind their backs when all we are doing is trying our best. I know that people have complained, but I am writing this note because even if there is the slightest chance that I can keep someone from going through what I've gone through, then that makes everything that I have been through worth it. As of right now, there are four more girls planning to quit because of Coke Tree, planning to quit right before the season starts because they physically and mentally can't do it anymore. The girls that quit, they want to come back, but that's not going to happen unless something has changed. As far as finding a new coach, I know that there is someone out there that can love us and bring our love for the game back the way they cannot. I know that this probably means nothing to anyone reading it, but for the future of Gate City volleyball, I really, really hope you can understand where I'm coming from and realize how hard it is for a young high school girl to tell her story, knowing that there is a chance that it's just gonna get ripped up and thrown in the trash. Thank you for taking time to read this, I bless you. Gate City High School volleyball player. This has been given for me to read each of these. This is a letter from a parent. There are so many more letters from years ago. I'm a firm believer in hard coaching, and I don't even mind them being hateful, but when you talk down to these girls and make them feel less than fearful and wonderfully made by our God, then that is not acceptable. As a parent, I have witnessed Darren and Amy cuss each other, scream and yell at the referees after their feelings were made known. My child, along with a few others, like you read in one of the letters above, are treated differently. Some players get multiple chances at making bad plays, to some of them, never coming out, but my child and a couple of others get put out on the court, mess up one time, and they take them out. I know from experience playing volleyball and other sports, that sometimes you have to work the nerves out and play for a bit to get the groove of the game, but my child does not get that chance. She's scared to death when they put her in, and if she makes a mistake, she knows she's gonna be pulled out. Now, if everyone is treated the same, that would be fine with me, but they are not. Some of the players have come to be crying after the game because they said that the Reeds told them they specifically caused the team to lose the game. We live in a time when we have so many self-image issues with teen suicide being at an all-time high that we cannot stand any longer for our children to be made felt worthless. I do like the fact that Coach Amy Reed takes these girls to FCA camp, but last year before they went to FCA camp, Darren and Amy got into an argument before the players, and the players witnessed them cuss each other. This year, at the first FCA camp, Darren got mad at the FCA director at that specific camp and yelled at him because they had accidentally put them in a game that they weren't supposed to be in. Also, the players told me that both coaches were yelling at them so loud that the other two teams on the other courts would stop and stare at them. In both cases, the girls were embarrassed. This is not acceptable behavior for a child, much less an adult and an authority figure. One of the FCA leaders asked the players why their grandchildren were at the camp because they were running around trying to keep them off the court while Darren and Amy were coaching. They go to every FCA camp and are usually at practices running on and off the court and throwing balls on the court while the girls are playing. I would think there would be some kind of insurance issue with that. At the second FCA camp, the coaches were frustrated with how the girls were playing, and Amy looked at the player and said, "Your team fucking sucks." Oh, sorry, freaking. They talked between each other about the girls on the bench and earshot at them. The girls rarely get any praise or, quote, "good job" from Amy. When the girls ask what they need to do to fix whatever they ring screen that for, the girls are told that they should know and that they need to fix it. This bullying behavior would not be accepted in the school from children, and it would not be accepted in another workplace, so why is it accepted in this situation when we are supposed to be confident that our children are being taught the game and taken care of and not being bullied? Thank you for your time. That's a parent of a varsity volleyball player. And lastly, to whom it may concern, as a former athlete of Gate City High School, I know the importance of sports in a middle and high school student's life. It helps build character, strength, and teamwork, something that's very important in life. The team aspect is vital, but something that is even more important is the leader of the team, the coach and coaches. I had such a positive role model in my tennis coach, a great environment of correction, care, and humor. I had people who took time to invest in me, telling me I needed to improve, but also encouraging me in a positive way. A coach who wanted the best for us but helped me to see our mistakes and where to improve. This experience prepared me for my future. I work with seventh through twelfth graders yearly in a church setting. I see them, hear them, and watch them. I am there for them, and I try my best to be a mentor and someone there for them in all aspects of life. Through this role, I have heard comments from my students that have shocked me about the volleyball program at Gate City High School. Comments made, words used, looks given, hardly ever any compliments, and schedules that made it impossible to have a life outside of volleyball. I have witnessed girls upset and have hardly heard anything positive to say about the volleyball program other than winning. I have no personal experience with the volleyball team other than trying out for the team and not making it in eighth grade. I've not had any personal experience with the Reeds other than some conversations, but what I have heard has not been positive and hasn't been something that I would want my kids to experience. In sports, there should be correction, advice, teaching moments, encouragement, guidance, support, and instruction given to all athletes. For Gate City volleyball, are these things being given and shown? What type of environment are the athletes in? Are the leaders being mentors for these students? I'm praying for this volleyball program and for the decisions ahead. I have students who will be playing on this team, and my heart is for them. A good coach improves your game. A great coach improves your life. That's a quote from Michael Chet's husband. Sincerely, Holly McPodmore. Thank you for your time. I believe you all do not have options.
Anyone else with a question? Senior, freshman, senior, and sheriff's. Do you know what FCC LA stands for? Anyone from the crowd? As a group, those of you who recognize, what does FCC LA stand for? One, two, three.
Family, career, and community leaders of America.
That's in the county. One more time. One, two, three.
Family, career, and community leaders of America.
I'm embarrassed to say that, aren't I? They compete both at the state as well as the national level. Each year, they go to Virginia Beach, and they compete against other FCC LA clubs without the Commonwealth. And this year, they were fortunate enough to get to travel to Seattle, Washington, there across the country. We're going from Scott County, Virginia, all the way east in Virginia, but then they traveled from Scott County, Virginia, all the way west. I hope you had a good time. You learned a little something about the program and made new friends. At this time, I'm gonna ask Ms. Ayden and the members of the Twin Springs High School FCC LA program, please come forward. Now, please made a mistake on any of this, I do apologize, we will correct it, okay? So Ms. Ayden, if you would, would you care to introduce this lovely group you have with us tonight?
Right here, so that's my mom, Taylor, and Ashley Taylor, and Miss Kay, and Susan Adams.
Thank you very much. As I said, we want to recognize the individuals who have one of your names. For hospitality, tourism, and recreation, Maddy Pearson and Miley Taylor place first in the state and also were national competitors. Emily Miano was, participated, promote, and publicize, she received the silver medal in the state. We have teach or train for state competition, we have Savannah Kraft, Kayla Adams, they placed first and third in the state. Sports nutrition, we have Maddy Pearson, who placed third in the state. And for our chapter service project, we have Alicia Begley, who placed fourth in the state. Let's give her a big round of applause. And now, Ms. Music, and Ms. Castle, and members of Gate City FCC LA chapter, please come forward. Ms. Music, Ms. Castle, would you like one of you to introduce our lovely group here?
This is Abby Vermillion, she is the newly elected Virginia State President, and she's a rising senior. And we have Kendall Green and Peyton Bellamy, they are upcoming ninth graders, and Emily Kendrick, who also is an upcoming senior. Oh, and Ms. Music, I'm sorry. We, uh, we had a little miscommunication, so a lot of our kids couldn't make it, they had practices and golf matches and things, so.
We're glad that each of you did, okay? And as I go through this, it's a total other group, when I call you, they just wait for a game. So our national programs in action, level one, uh, we had first place, and they received the gold medal, we have Maddy Adams, Eli Lester, and Ally Page. For national programs in action, level one, we had Peyton Bellamy, Kendall Green, Emily Tate. Peyton placed first and received a silver medal. Kendall, uh...
Well, no, Peyton, they all placed first in state, these two.
Okay, all placed first in state. Peyton and Kendall received a gold medal in the nationals, ranking in the top ten.
They were actually number six.
Number six. Professional presentation, level two, we have Cheyenne Carrier, placed first and received a silver medal. Career investigation, level two, Mary Johnson, third place, and received a silver medal. Professional presentation, level two, we have Lexie Urban and Sarah Wallen, who placed second and received a silver medal. In sports nutrition, level two, Samuel Page placed second in the state and received a silver medal, and also fourth at the national level in hospitality, tourism, and recreation. Madison Second, Sexton received a silver medal and placed second in the state and received a silver medal in the national level. The national programs in action, level two, Callie Stevenson placed first in the state and received a gold medal. And third in hospitality, tourism, and recreation challenge two at the national level, along with Lexie Gillenwater.
And at nationals, Hattie Sutton for Lexie.
And at national competition, Hattie Robinson, along with Callie, received a gold medal at the national competition. And like that. In chapter review, level two, we have Alexis Carrico and Carly Mead, who placed third and received a silver medal. Jacob Bowman was a member of the tech crew. Jay Lane was an evaluator. Hattie Robinson, an evaluator, who placed first in hospitality, tourism, and recreation challenge, level two. And Emily Kendrick, who is a two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four state vice president of competitive events, congratulations. She received first place, science and SCS challenge, level three. Second place, FCC LA knowledge challenge. And we have Abby Vermillion, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five state president. Congratulations. Congratulations. And now it's turn, the Red Jacket, FCC LA chapter, please come forward. And notice we have another individual with the red jacket.
Okay, so this is Natalie Fannin, she is Virginia's first vice president this year. And then this is Lindsay Vincent, Sophie Wilson, then Charlie Woodard, and Akela Harless. And then I did turn in our state, like awards and stuff, for this year, I just turned in the nationals, but we actually had five first-place trophies this year, and then we also had a second place and a fourth place this year.
Congratulations. Now, I may mention about the red jacket. State officers wear the red jackets, so Scott County, it's blessed, I had two state officers in FCC LA, so congratulations, the folks in you for that accomplishment. But we want to recognize these individuals here who competed at the national level. We have Charlie Woodard and Sophie Wilson. I told them, just play different, all your names. Digital stories for change, level three, they received a gold medal, second place in the nation. Kayden Chavez, repurpose and redesign, level three, silver, they placed thirty-fourth in the nation. Zach Lane, FCC LA knowledge test, level two, sixteenth place in the nation. Lindsay Vincent, sports nutrition, level two, twenty-third, received a silver medal, twenty-third in the nation. Akela Harless, chapter in review, portfolio, level three, silver. Probably didn't say your name right, but, oh, did? Akela Harless, chapter in review, portfolio, level three, received a silver medal, twelfth in the nation, winner of pin trading competition for the state of Virginia by networking with other FCC LA members around the nation. Natalie Fannin, FCC LA, knowledge test, level two, first place in the nation, served as a voting delegate for the national business meeting where she voted on bylaw changes, and Natalie currently serves as Virginia's FCC LA first vice president. Congratulations. Let's give these individuals a round of applause. Congratulations, thank you all. Now, in addition to recognizing our participants in FCC LA, we also want to recognize our student athletes who participated in state competition, Virginia state competition. So if Keener Bur, if Keener Bur will come forward, along with Colton Kilgore, Abel Dinges, Clay Ross, and Parker Thomas.
Chandler.
Keener is a boys' track coach, along with Lenora, I'm gonna say Dinges. Chandler is the girls' track coach. If you would, let's introduce our young men.
This is Abel Dinges, Colton Kilgore, Clay Ross, and Parker Thomas. Colton Kilgore competed in the one hundred ten meter hurdles and the three hundred meter hurdles, and also the triple jump. He placed eighth in the triple jump, and placed second in the one ten meter hurdles and was state champion in the three hundred meter hurdles, and then all four boys were a part of the four-by-four relay team that qualified for state, and they placed sixteenth overall in the state. So we're really proud of them.
Yes, she did. Cause Lenora said everything that I was gonna share. So congratulations, we do have a resolution to recognize your achievements. We have Colton Kilgore, state champion, congratulations. And the member of the four-by-one relay team that finished, uh, sixteenth of that team, and runner-up, I guess, and, uh, congratulations. David Williams, congratulations. Clay Ross, congratulations. And Parker Thomas. Let's get these individuals by the round. Very much, congratulations, each of you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you all. Colton, please. Come on up. Now, this past spring was the first year that Twin Springs High School had been a state. They did extremely well.
It's all good.
It's all good. So we want to congratulate Hattie Baze. She had outstanding season here on the court. She placed first in the Cumbre District Singles, first in Region D Singles, and was state runner-up in the Virginia High School Singles, tenth state championship. We have a resolution here to recognize your accomplishments, Hattie, and we want to say congratulations to you. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Congratulations. If Coach Lively and Coach Sarah Vermians would please come forward along with members of Gate City High School Tennis Team.
Sorry for not having our whole team.
That's all right.
Got a little late on that.
That's all right. Alana, would you care to introduce each other?
Yes, this is one of our varsity players, Kira Tate.
Kira Tate, congratulations. Gate City Girls Tennis Team had outstanding year. They competed, of course, in the state quarterfinals for Group Two A. And in that, they were Mountain Seven District Runner-Up, Region Two D Runner-Up, and quarterfinalist for the Virginia High School League State Two A Quarterfinals. Madeline Greer was first team All-Mountain Seven along with Maddie Bartley. And we have resolutions here to recognize your team as well as those individuals. So we want to say congratulations and we wish you best of luck in the coming season. Thank you so much. Congratulations. We also have an individual from Raccovah High School. He was a member of the Raccovah High School Football Team, and he's a football practice. He's been along with his baseball coach. This young man did make All-State. His name is Landon Lane. He was recognized as All-Cumberland District First Team Outfielder, All-Region D First Team Outfielder, and Group A All-State Second Team Outfielder. Let's give Landon a round of applause. Coach Peterson and Coach Lawson, if you would, come forward along with members of Hope Raccovah High School Girls and Boys Track. Who's going to be the designated speaker? Coach Peterson, if you would, introduce her.
We have Gage Sloan and Jalen Rogers. Those are our siblings that won half this year. And then we have Marley Christis.
Very good. Jalen, if you'd jump here, just when I call your name, just finally say hello to the group. Jalen Rogers was recognized as Group A All-State in the high jump. She was All-Region One D in the four hundred meter, one hundred meter hurdles and the high jump, and was recognized as All-Cumberland District in the four hundred meter, one hundred meter hurdles, three hundred meter hurdles, high jump, long jump, and triple jump. Congratulations, Jalen. Clifton Good, recognized as a Group A All-State in the one hundred ten meter hurdles. He was All-Region One D in the one hundred ten meter hurdles, three hundred meter hurdles, and triple jump, and All-Cumberland District in the one hundred ten meter hurdles, three hundred meter hurdles, high jump, and triple jump. Congratulations. And Gage Sloan, recognized as Group A All-State in the high jump, All-Region One D in the four hundred meter, high jump, long jump, and triple jump, and All-Cumberland District in the one hundred meter, two hundred meter, four hundred meter, high jump, long jump, and triple jump. And we have resolutions here to recognize their accomplishments as they participated in this. Congratulations.
Marley Christis also won, we did twice this year. She was on our couple.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much. Coach Hood. And your coaching staff. And Raccovah High School Softball Team. You got a good-looking group though. Coach Hood, if you would, let's introduce your coaches and coaches. If you don't have those.
Michael Edwards, David Carter, Montez Delo, Patty Wood, Kenzie Hood, Lydia Edwards, Jas Stanley, Sarah Berger, Morgan Edwards, Allison Akers, Peyton Kern, Madison Early, Grace Bird, Marley Christ.
Now, last year we recognized them as state runner-up. This year they came home with a big trophy. They had a rough go, I guess, with each side. It's kind of back and forth. And I'd share with someone, at this stage of the season, it's the team that's the hottest that's going to win. I guess who ends up being the hottest team? It didn't matter about what happened in the district. It didn't matter what happened in the region. That state championship's automatic, if I correct. And with this, we have individuals, actually five, who made All-Team, All-State, Group A All-State First Team, in addition to winning the state tournament. If you would, when I call your name, Eden Moxey. She was Cumberland District Picture of the Year, All-Cumberland District First Team, Region One D First Team, and Group A All-State First Team. Gracie Turner, All-Cumberland District First Team, Region One D First Team, and All-State First Team, Group A All-State First Team. Maddie Wood. I've got a resolution here for you, Maddie. Give me one moment here. I apologize here and read out my names because I'm trying to hand out resolutions here. Maddie was All-Cumberland District First Team. In Group A All-State First Team. Kenzie Hood. Kenzie was All-Cumberland District First Team, Region One D First Team, and Group A All-State First Team. Jas Stanley. All-Cumberland District First Team, All-Region D First Team, and Group A All-State First Team. Coach Hood, we have a resolution here to recognize the entire Raccovah High School Softball Team, Virginia High School League State Championship. Congratulations. Now, ladies and gentlemen, if you need to go off to college and play softball, so how many of you will be returning? Several, that's good. And those of you who are graduating going off to college, we wish you the very best, good luck, and want you to come back and visit with us, okay? Raccovah High School Girls Softball Team, State Championship.
You got your approval of student representatives to the board? And this was presented after our last meeting and tabled. You had a policy presented last time that pursuant to twenty-two point one, eighty-six point one of the Code of Virginia that permits student representatives to be appointed before the board or to the board, and it's up for approval.
Any others guess?
I make a motion to approve. At state representatives to our school.
Can I call for a second?
Your right. I'll be at second, I'll say. Okay, in our seconds, a motion failed on that. All right, next item on agenda is superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Under the document laying in front of you there, I handed it out, there was included, there was an additional regulation that was included that was not part of the original package. And if you would, look at the August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four policy update. It should be included there in your notes. Within the policy manual, based on actions taken by the General Assembly, you will see many of the policies themselves or the cross-reference, legal references updated. All that goes along with these changes, as well as some new policies that are highlighted in green, and those in yellow have been deleted from the policy manual in itself. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to these changes, I ask for your approval of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five policy manual as presented with these changes.
I make the motion to approve. And motion to me, and second to Mr. Mead, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And like that too, with the additional changes within the policy manual, it did change, and we did have some updates within our student handbook as it coincides with the policy manual. I've included the pages of the headings that were affected by these changes. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to that, I ask for your approval as presented.
Motion to Mr. House, right second to Mr. Hood, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the June two thousand twenty-four Head Start Financial Report. Unless there's any questions in regards to it, I ask for your approval as presented.
Motion to Mr. House, right second to Mr. Hood, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
The next item we have is the Head Start Colon Budget Revision Application. Unless, and this is for effective January one, two thousand twenty-four to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, again, this is a revision application. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask for your approval as presented.
I'll second. A motion from Mr. Hood, second to me, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the Head Start Annual Report for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. I think that's just for informational purposes, isn't it?
It is.
Any questions in regards to this document? It's Cindy Raymond, our director of Head Start Program. And last item we have is the Head Start Director's Report for July two thousand twenty-four. And again, this is for informational purposes. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that document?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. That's all that I have. I understand that we need to go into closed meeting. Can I get a motion?
I'm going to move that we enter into closed meeting to discuss candidates for employment and assignment and performance of Head Start personnel, teachers, teaching assistants, coaches, principals, nurses, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria staff as provided in section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia as amended.
A motion and second, meaning the chairman.
Well, we're in closed session until we close this day.